Looking to do, that's the part I think people are okay with, it's the forcing the credit, that really makes it difficult.
Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that up.
And I just had, I had one tiny minor, and I don't even know how critical it is for this, but in your clubs and activities, I'm not sure that that's comprehensive with everything, only, and I only picked up on it because we've had a couple of recent presentations, so.
Is it, I'm sorry, I missed it.
In the clubs and activities.
I'm not too.
So the B-.
Maybe B-.
Club. B- Club, yeah, B- Club's not there, and what Blaze talked about last week, the rugby, rugby club's not there, I don't know if that's intended to continue next week.
Rugby Club is not attached to the school.
Oh, it's not?
Oh, right there.
Sorry, I went by it.
Okay, yeah, so, and I think your mountain bike club, is that attached to the school?
Yes.
Yeah, so anyways, it's.
No, it's good, we, we.
It's minor, but.
One of the good things is we add a lot, and so, um, we're getting into the handbook of the program studies, and we probably have to update the program studies.
That's not a minor, that's a great thing to bring up, perfect thing to bring up, appreciate it. Um, so these, those get added as they go, so just for clarity for people tuned in, yes, sir?
So, in these programs and studies, does it include the courses and everything for next year?
Yep.
Yeah, are there any new courses that seem exciting, if you're curious?
So we asked, well, fairly, we're not. No, it's, it's, it's nice that we have a risk that we might have, of all the ones listed, we might have missed out many more, that's a wonderful problem to have, wonderful question to answer. So, in its current state, because we do keep adding things and adjusting for the student needs population and staffing, how, um, in the past, how accurate have we kept that lengthy list of clubs and the like?
Mostly accurate, mostly accurate, we, you know, it's interesting, just we've got, we've done the schedule already for next year, and I think things should be updated, but they're, meaning, I, I think they are updated in that program studies, but, um, you know, occasionally, you know, I'll, I'll blame Terrell, but in a good way, there, there becomes time to, we just find a need at some point in time, and, uh, you know, what we typically do is add that class, and then go to the program studies next year.
Yep. All right. Any other comments, questions? Appreciate the discussion. Could I, I'm sorry, I got motion second, all in favor of approving the proposed program of studies for two thousand nineteen, twenty, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate that. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the proposed project manager contract two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Would you like to make a motion to approve that contract for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, good, this is discussion, thank you, Andy. All right. Took a lot of work to get to this point, in a, in a very, fairly short period of time, so, uh, first, I have any questions, uh, comments or corrections, Andy and I are the closest to this.
So this goes through March of next year, and then depending on what happens next.
So the, I, I put the addendum page, I didn't want to print out the whole eleven pages, so just page four gives out the clarity of the contract, um, where it's a seventy dollar an hour from May first, two thousand nineteen, to March fifteenth, and then based upon successful vote, um, we may choose to extend the contract.
So, just to make sure if we have new folks on board, go ahead, did you have a question or not?
Yep, I was gonna ask if there's a cap on that, on the, on the total spend that you might incur.
So you'll see that in your last approved article tonight, will be up to forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yes, great question, so just to make sure everybody knows what we're talking about up here, so the owner's project manager is a model where, um, we, uh, seek experienced help in guiding us through the school project. Um, so we have, um, that, we, there's been a series of meetings, we covered a lot of this last month, I can try to give you the short version. Um, after the new board was formed, Andy joined SCES subcommittee, I was still on it, there's two board members in the subcommittee, in that meeting, we, uh, pretty briskly got to a unanimous decision to do this all that set of committees, so we're focusing all of our efforts on our CIP, town has a CIP, we have a CIP, makes more sense. Um, that was driven, um, in part by several voices of, yes, we absolutely have to address the elementary school, but we really want to look at the whole school system, which includes both buildings, um, and athletic fields, which came up today with the way the, the weather's been this spring, so. The, um, SCS subcommittee that was very active last year is, is, is gone, the CIP is going to be bolstered with, um, our full focus on that, and so, that committee tried forth, the owner's project manager, to, um, we were, we did interviews, we had excellent candidates to pick from, it's a luxury when you're interviewing, especially in this, uh, economy and job market, we, we had three very talented candidates, we're thankful all three of them for their interest. Um, and so, we moved fairly, um, successfully forward with that, so, it's, um. Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, it's Gordon Bristol, and, um, he's finishing a large project locally, you'll be able to meet him, he's gonna help us with, uh, one of the first duties for this is to have, help us select the appropriate architect, when that is in place, then we can work towards, um, scheduling community forum or forums to hear what the community's feelings are about this, and we have both of those resources to guide us forward. There is the hourly fee, seventy dollars, I think, is what was settled, um, but there can be an enormous savings on the back end, and also, um, navigating the permits, how to na, how to work with different entities, how to watch costs, all of those, so it's, it's basically a partner and advocate for the school board and the taxpayers to, um, make sure the right things are coming to light at the right cost, at the right pace, so it's very exciting for those of us, uh, that, I guess I'm the only one left from that committee, to have, this is a very different approach, which I think the community is gonna be, um, very happy with. So, um, got a motion to the second, any, any questions specifically, Andy, do you wanna add any color, did I, I, I tried to do the faster.
Think you did a good job.
All right, we take turns on that as we go for it, all right, thanks. Um, all right, so, did you wanna add anything, any comments, Kelly Russ, okay. Um, all in favor of approving the proposed project manager contract for two thousand nineteen, twenty, please say aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, appreciate it. Um, and related to that, moving on, I'd like a motion to approve the proposed request for Pope, or RFQ, for architectural and design firms to review and develop plans to address the district facility issues and needs.
I'd like a motion to approve the proposed RFQ for architectural and design firms to review and develop plans to address district facility issues and needs.
All said, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, Andy, all right, uh, questions, comments, concerns?
I have lots of questions.
Go for it, fire away.
All right. So, um, I've got a lot of notes, so I gotta first be able to read my notes here, so we talked about, um, potentially considering a firm to bring in and create a master facility plan, so presumably that's to assess the current state of the facilities that we have, is that right?
That is a wonderful question.
Yep, yeah, so, my question, though, really, is, is if we're going to do that, is that not kind of a, does that not a first step before we start planning what to do, would we want to not know that before we start planning what we're actually gonna do?
You, yes.
Does that make sense, does that make sense?
Yes, to restate your, your question as, as a direct response, so what's gonna happen?
Yeah.
So, we have Gordon's help, he's gonna help us find the right part, as our partner and advocate, he's gonna help us find the right partner to work with, then, that architect firm, the build doesn't, the build not, not be select, builder might not be selected until after the bond passes. The architect is gonna look at everything, so we have twenty years of documents from the original start of the facility, the, uh, the plant, the facility that, that failed in two thousand six, and then the new version of it that failed in March, so they, they digest all of that as part of making their own assessment, and then, they say, um, this is what we want you thinking about, to the point of, this is an, this is the one thing you can do, these are three things you can do, we don't know what they're gonna say, but the big part of it is leveraging what we've already paid for to get to this point, but then they take their fresh view, because they might come up with some very different highlights.
So that's, it's not that we're going to hire a new firm to come in and do this facilities assessment, that's already been done?
They're gonna come in and, we're hiring them to come in and do a facilities assessment, as part of that, we're gonna give them everything that we have, that we've done over the last many years, I'm missing, I'm sorry, I'm missing.
Well, no, I guess, I guess what I'm concerned about is, I don't know that that's the skill set of an architect, I feel like that's like a whole separate skill set of somebody you'd have to hire as a consultant to do that type of evaluation.
Actually, there has been some, quite a bit of documentation, and already it's been done with like the heating system here, the air handlers, and, and we have a relationship with Honeywell that's done a facilities, uh, plan for the high school, um, but I think what, the architect, what we would like the architect to do is to review that plan, see what the needs are here also, so that they can help us come up with a full facilities plan.
Got it.
And Gordon is gonna be reviewing it as well, from that perspective of that, if this, you know, when this goes to build, all of those things are aligned, so he's gonna do his assessment, and then, the architect is gonna have their own view and leverage what we've already been, so it's a combination, really, of at least three major factors.
A bunch of factors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to start thinking one school and think district projects?
Oh, no, I fully agree, I was just, I, it was more questioning whether the architect is the right person to make an evaluation on the lifespan of a building, which I would, in my maybe not so informed way, I would say probably not.
Right.
They can, they can do all the master planning and stuff, but when you're talking about evaluating the lifespan of a building, or, you know, some of the other, you know, structural integrity and things like that, I don't think that that's in the wheelhouse of an architect, that's, that's what I was getting.
Sure. So have we answered?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
But having, uh, Gordon's expertise and him getting started right away.
Yeah.
Does some of that work?
Yeah.
It's part of, it's part of his expertise, knowing where and when to pull in the right person to, you know, assist him with that process, that's, I mean, that's part of his expertise.
He, he's, he's gonna, he advises the subcommittee, and then we're gonna take an action that the board, uh, weigh in on, then Andy and I bring it from the subcommittee up to here, so, so yes, but he's gonna say, this is what we're, this is what we're looking at, this is what I recommend, we can consider it, if the subcommittee is good, then it comes back to this board.
And I, I would think that the architect is gonna have his engineers and his team around him as well, and I'm gonna make the assumption that we'll probably go with someone who's done a lot of school projects, so I do think they'll have the ability to look at what we've already done, and then make some assessments as far as, like, is the Honeywell system, is Honeywell a report, is that what we'd wanna be, and is that accurate, are we done within the next five years, does that building have ten years left of life, or does it have twenty years left of life, based upon what we already know is there? So I think they will be able to, maybe not to the point where we just brought an engineer in and said, hey, specifically look at our HVAC needs, what do you think, which we've done here, but I think they can put all that together in one pot, and using their engineers and the design team, come up and give us some answers, and then give us plans, whether it's one, two, three, or five different plans, and then we have to determine which and how we put them in, where we put them.
So if this goes well, which we are optimists, motivated to have it go well, and it's gonna be brisk, and there's gonna be a very, I'm gonna look at Andy and not smile, but I can't, there's gonna be a lot of meetings, there's gonna be a lot of information at these meetings that comes up, because of all the notes and everything, so we're looking at, um, while the school's getting into their feariously busy season, this is potentially gonna be a lot, because we need to get things lined up enough soon, because we wanna get, uh, to a community forum as soon as we responsibly can, so expect, there's a likelihood there'll be several updates in the next couple of meetings, um, about hopefully some great progress from it. All right, anything feel set, Scott? All right, so.
So I, I have a lot more.
Oh, good, sorry. I like the discussion, keep going.
I don't wanna bog this down, but I do have a lot of questions, like in, in the RFQ space, and when we're asking about experience, and the, the information that we wanna get back from these potential firms.
Yeah.
Um, so I feel like, there's, so let me start with some, just some questions, so when we talk about describing experience of New Hampshire public school systems, is there a reason why we wanna narrow it to just New Hampshire, as opposed to surrounding states potentially, or?
There are different educational specifications that each state has, and so we wanna make sure that someone at least has some experience with New Hampshire specifications.
But you, but we could take a firm from another state as long as they have experience, yeah?
Yeah, we'd expect Maine, Massachusetts experience to be, to find this.
Yeah.
Appealing project, but did, I'm gonna consider it, but it's, is emphasizing how to navigate, um, New Hampshire.
Yes.
Is a priority, but it's not an ex, you know, an ex, with them.
Yeah.
There's also some cost factor, you know, the state firms, they get more mileage, they get, you know, more time, so hopefully we can find somebody local that will fit our needs.
Right. Okay, um, so, and then we're asking about experience in the last three years, do you feel like that's a wide enough timeframe, 'cause I, I mean, I don't know how frequently these school projects come up, especially large scale ones, but three years feels like a really narrow window.
So, just, just a quick clarification, so on this RFQ, this is like a quote, so we're really just interviewing architectural firms right now?
Yeah.
So I would think, once we determine, maybe we narrow that down through an interview process of three, when we put an RFP out, 'cause now we're gonna ask them to come in and say, all right, what do you, how much is this gonna cost, and these are the things we needed to do.
Yeah.
So I, I think we're just trying to cast a net right now, uh, looking who's available, and then I think we get a little more specific, so, like, give us, give us your last ten years of building projects, if we decide that you're one of the top three firms that we're really taking a look at.
Yeah, so I'm, so I do a lot of work in RFQs and RFPs, so I write them, I receive them, so, I'm looking at this through my lens and just picking out what pops out to me.
Sure.
So, three years, again, just to me, struck me immediately, I was pretty narrow, based on my experience, this isn't my expert, you know, my area of expertise, but it just, just a, you know.
We will have.
Question, I'll defer to, to people who have more expertise, but.
Well, and the, the piece of this, I think that's great, and these are great questions, I, and ask them all, because Gordon will look at this Friday with me, and then we'll go through this and say, hey, this is good, this is bad, this is what we need to change, before we actually put out the final version.
Yeah, yeah, and I did read that too, so that's good. Um, okay, so then the other pieces were just more recommendations, because there's a, you know, there's a number of things that we're asking for, for them to speak to in the way of their experience, but I think, if you look at the selection criteria that are listed, I think at a minimum, the selection criteria need to have corresponding questions that tap into those areas of interest, so when you talk about sustainability and energy efficiency, I think we need to ask specifically what their experience is with those things. Um, specifically what are their experiences with working with state agencies, and in what capacity, right, what agencies and what capacity were you working with them? I don't know, can I just keep going?
Well.
I don't wanna dominate the.
No, no, you might be more insightful, so I would, I'm, I'm making the assumption that's coming out during that interview process, that would, that's when we go and we dig a little deeper.
So with your experience with that.
'Cause that's right, I mean, given that insight, because that's kinda how I'm looking at that, that once.
Yeah.
We sort of, you, you've applied, we're interviewing you, and we're gonna, okay, let's talk about state agencies, how have you worked with the Department Ed, how have you worked with the Department of Transportation in New Hampshire? That's where I see that level of questioning come.
I guess it depends on how you intend to use this information to form your, to, to narrow down the candidates.
Right.
Effectively, your candidate pool, and if some of this information is key and critical to making those decisions, then I would think the more information you get upfront is gonna make you, or enable you to make a more informed decision to narrow and only interview those who really fit the bill.
Yeah.
That's, that's the way I would look at it.
So.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's a, it's a good insight, I, so my assumption, by, on the, the, the PM, we put that out there, I think we were hoping four or five, right, we probably would've got four or five, we probably would've interviewed all four or five. So on this, uh, let, let's say we have six, I would assume, we're gonna go probably interview all six, now, but you had ten?
Yeah.
You're probably right, I'd probably have to go to the committee and say, all right, who do we know, who can I stop to call, there's vendors off in other schools, how does that work, what does that work look like, and I'd sort of go through a network, but, no, I understand the, the point.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, my thought was, would be more through that process, so if I got five architectural design teams, I'd probably interview all five and try to dig to that level during that interview process.
Before I move on, this is, within your expertise, whether it applies to building schools or not, or hiring architects, if you have specific questions that you recommend.
Yeah.
For the committee to, um, consider, that would be wonderful to have here, and.
Yeah.
And it can be a great, from, asking the right questions, is if you don't have the expertise, you're looking at a phone, pharmaceutical world, this is what you think this should be asked, if you could give Andy and I those questions, then we can, that'll broaden our perspective.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I can either keep going through them now, or I can send them separately, because I've got, you know, a number of things that I raise questions about, just trying to put myself in the seat of a selection committee, and what, what information I'd be looking at to do a comparison, and, and for me. When I'm reviewing RFQs and trying to select a vendor, I wanna try to get as much of an apples to apples comparison from one.
When you're looking at the issue.
Right, right, from one group to the next. And there's multiple factors, right, so, I think it's kind of important, and, so, I will send you the questions, that I think would, that I would recommend be included, or things that we should look at, the only other thing that I'll say right here is on the professional fees piece, I think it makes sense to tighten that up, because it's not really specific what we're asking them to bid on, we haven't defined very precisely what the project is, it could be a whole bunch of different variations or scenarios that we're looking at, so I think, again, just to try and do an apples to apples comparison, you don't wanna choose the most expensive firm, you don't wanna choose the cheapest, but you wanna kinda know, somewhere on the spectrum, based on a set of criteria you get them to bid on, what pricing is gonna look like, so if, if you can outline, just give an overview of our district facilities, our student population, what we're trying to solve for.
Yeah.
If you outline all of those criteria, and then ask them to provide a ballpark estimate based on what you've provided, then you know that at least everybody's looking at it through the same lens, and you can tell, if you get a cost for, you know, X versus Y, you know, where, where they are as far as.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm going through, as I went through things today, and I've gone through them, so, my thought there would've been, you're gonna look at your architect fee, your, your sub fee, your engineering fee.
Yep.
You're, you're right, whatever, one of those sort of people that are on their staff, and sort of looking at those typical people, I would say.
Yeah.
And then matching those, but you're going a little more granular, I can, I can see that.
Well, yes and no, because the other, I initially thought about this, I, I said, well, maybe hourly rates, asking for hourly rates for those people is the way to go, but then, I don't think that is the way to go, because again, depending on the mix of staff, the, the skill set and the levels of the staff, what might be ten hours for one firm, because they use this level, could be five at another firm, so while maybe more expensive hourly, it's offset by less hours.
Sure.
So I think having the overview and ask them, asking them to ballpark based on this.
Yeah.
If you were to do a master plan, based on our school district, our facilities, what we're trying to solve for, give us a ballpark estimate of what that would look like, I think you'll get something that's a little bit more interpretable.
You're meeting with Gordon on this Friday, right?
Yep, yep, so we'll be on the.
You happen to be around on Friday.
Possibly, just depends on the time.
That would, if you guys could check on central.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense, because I mean, in my world, Parker's time is worth a heck of a lot more than a staff accountant, those three levels are between, so, you wanna get a sense of what resources they're gonna utilize, and there may be a cost differential.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I also wanna see, you know, in a scenario like this, I wanna see, um, when they're talking about their experience in the projects that they've managed in the past, I wanna see what their projected estimates were upfront, now, I mean, I guess, it's, it's only gonna be as good as, as they are truthful, but you ask, if we ask for their, um, initial projected estimates for the project versus where they landed in actuality, you can get some idea of, you know, how accurate they are in their bidding, what their overage typically, I mean, typically, you're gonna go over and not under, that's.
Not in this project, but I know it's.
Hopefully, but, but, I mean, but, but in general, you can see how accurate they are, and then where there's variation, you, we would, I would want to know, why did it vary, is it because, you know, we as a district asked you to add a bunch of things, or is it because your timeline just ran six months longer than it should've, so, you know.
Just for insight, one of the, um, project manager proposals was framed exactly like that.
Mm-hmm.
And that was, you know, it was laid out consistently, you know, budget for the project, savings, timeline, the whole bit, so that's what we would expect. Um, I guess I'm editorializing beyond what I should, but there aren't a whole lot of districts in New Hampshire that are gonna be trying to build or remodel the schools next year, so the folks that cater to that have a limited target audience, and they're gonna come at us with, we have a steep learning curve, we have Andy's expertise from his building, um, career, um, but we're expecting to have those kinds of details, so to have this discussion on the front is exactly what.
Yeah.
We, is, helpful and needed, so, keep, keep going, what else you got?
Um, well, I think most of them are recommendations for questions that we should be asking, so again, I can either go through them all, or I can, I can share them separate for consideration.
Right, whatever, how, if you can sit down with me tomorrow, and then I can get them to the committee, then my big piece would be to sit down, when I sit with Gordon, and just say, all right, here's some of the concerns and questions that came out of the board meeting, you've been through this process a lot many times before I did, where are we going?
Yeah, I mean, I think conceptually, it's, it's directionally right, I think it just can be tightened up a lot more to get a better output from the firms that are gonna bid.
Sure.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, no other comments or questions? Uh, so we're gonna go with approving this, this is proposed, but everybody understands that, now, you're gonna help with it, and it was already planned for Russ and Gordon to meet on it, on Friday, so, I'm comfortable with that, um, it doesn't make sense to everybody that's watching, um, so I'd, I'd say, all in favor of approving the proposed RFQ for the architecture and design firms to review and develop plans to address the district facility issues and needs, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ananous. Um, I need a motion to approve the proposed, excuse me, teacher for SMHS, Scott McNamee.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed teacher for SMHS.
Hold on a second.
Carrie, thank you, any, uh, questions, discussion? Any, any comments?
We have the resignation of Mike Robbins, we have our nineteen applicants, I think Sean interviewed six or seven, and this was the committee's top choice.
Strong applicant pool.
Very strong, references can highly recommend.
Really, really strong applicants.
Maybe just a quick, uh, point of interest for all of the new board members, how, how does that interview process, if it'll work for a new teacher, what's the?
So Sean would, Sean would put a commi, committee together of teachers and faculty here, uh, he would, they would decide, again, we had nineteen applicants in this one, they went through that pool, they decided they were gonna interview, I think, six or seven, he has those interviews, and they basically get narrowed down to probably two or three, um, they vote on who they think they wanna send forward to me, the superintendent, I allow them to see, send one or two to me if they can't make a decision, in this case, they sent one, met with the individual, um, called his references, voted with the superintendent, they're good references, met with him, asked him if he was interested in the job, and he's willing to accept. So that's, in a nutshell, the process, I guess, that probably takes a month, maybe a little longer time, depending on the, where can we get people in, well, not from start to bed to finish, from start to bed to finish is probably a couple of months, I don't see.
Yeah, probably a little over a month from start to bed, you know, we have your kinds of position, um, we always for a teacher position, have a, have a hiring committee, you know, typically, it's at least one administrator, sometimes two, usually a member of guidance, um, member of special education, in this case, whether being an English teacher, you're gonna have at least one English teacher, in this case, it was two, so typically, we try to keep people, about six or seven people, um, they make a recommendation to me, um, again, as Mr. Holden said, sometimes it could be two or three, and we'll bring them to the next level, um, sometimes it can be one, and, uh, it comes to me as a recommendation, and then, um, I bring it to Mr. Holden, and it's usually pretty, pretty streamlined process, they're very comfortable about it, like a very common set of questions, the committee is actively involved in preparing those questions.
So our new English teacher has a, uh, BFA from St. Lawrence in English writing, and a master's in education curriculum design from New England College, so, um, it's a pretty impressive resume. All right, uh, looking for a motion to approve the proposed teacher for some elementary school, all in favor? Please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. Um, is that time of year we need to approve the, so I get a motion to approve the Primex CAP program?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Primex CAP program. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Scott Med. All right, um, first page in gives a summary, just so people aren't used to that, or if you didn't get a packet, a three-year agreement to. Thank you, Scott and Ed, all right, um, first page in gives a summary, just so people aren't used to that, or if you didn't get a packet, a three-year agreement to purchase work.